All right, we'll get started. The City of Gilbert, City Council meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, June 27, 2023. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Councillor Potvinen.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councillor Polis.
Here.
Councillors Skensidge and Heitzman are absent with notice. City Attorney is on Zoom. And we have City Engineer, Campground Host, and myself, Clark Zaller.
Thank you. Would everybody please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Excuse me. Do we have any approved additions, deletions?
Do have an addition. Actually, Attorney did say we do need to have a motion for the Cliffs agreement for them to access the old city dump. I have the motion here. I can have you read it if you guys would like to add that to new business this evening.
And that's for again?
It will be for Cleveland Cliffs. It's a relocation agreement giving us or them the right to go ahead and vacate that dump within their property. That's the old dump. That's all if you go towards McKinley.
And to vacate it.
And to vacate it, correct.
Yeah, it's the old city garbage dump. A lot of people don't realize that Gilbert has a city dump there.
I'll move to add it to the agenda.
Moved by Councillor Polis. Do I have support? Supported by Councillor Potvinen to add the relocation agreement for the old city garbage dump between with Cliffs, Cleveland Cliffs, Menorca Mine. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero.
We'll look when we get there to just clarify what their stance is.
Yep, perfect. Yes, and we will put that in with new business. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Moved by Councillor Polis.
I'll second just for discussion on Jill on that Magna Construction June payment. Is that paying them off in full or is there a balance after that?
I am not sure. I would doubt that that is their final payment as I know there's some work that they're going to be finishing up on. So they will have, I would imagine at least one or two more. I know they're gone, but I mean, they're behind, so.
Were they just requesting the $16,000? Is that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
For our portion.
I guess that's all I have.
Seconded in by Councillor Potvinen. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. Anybody have their windows open in their vehicles? Okay. Invoices for campground, that's included. So public, any public input? Please stand up to the podium. Pardon me? No, you're fine to, yep. No, yeah, I read that. I sometimes think aloud.
Okay. I'm just here to, with Mona Derek, to offer the city $1,000 for her lot next to hers in this sick of written things saying she's offering.
Is this a copy for us or do you need a copy? Okay, but you have, this is, okay. This was discussed at a working session or informational meeting we had yesterday. And they were advised to bring a proposal in. We can't decide on it because it takes four votes from the council. However, we can gather the information and have it ready for the next council.
The caller with the decision?
After the next council meeting, correct. So, and it's just this lot here. So you go out in New Jersey.
Yep.
School owns this. This is the city parking lot. It's this property. It's less than one acre.
And it's going to be used for a garden, is that my understanding? Yes.
And you own the property next to it, correct? Correct.
We just got to wait for enough people to vote on it.
Yep, so we'll take the information. We'll keep it into consideration. We'll put it on the next agenda for council to vote, providing we have the staff here to vote on it.
Mayor, if I may, can we instruct Attorney Lindsey to go ahead and draw up the purchase agreement so we have all those documents ready if it were to go through?
I guess, is he on Zoom? Is he?
He is on Zoom. I don't know if he heard me. Should I take it? Oh, he's on.
He's not.
Yeah, he's on meanwhile, so I'm not sure if he heard.
Okay.
Good to ask.
Whoa, here. Yep, he's there.
Question was to you, Attorney Lindsey. Could we have you draw up a purchase agreement and have all the documentation for Ramona to purchase that additional lot next to hers for next meeting?
Yes, that would be just fine and I can get that put together on time.
Okay. We just don't have enough council to vote on it, but if we have everything ready would be my suggestion.
Yep.
Right. So what I'll do, I can put together all of the documents, including the necessary resolution which we can act on at the next meeting.
Excellent. So we don't need a vote on this now, correct?
And that's correct here. What you could do is just have, if you've been authorized, first pass a motion directly to prepare the documents for the next meeting.
I'll move on that motion.
Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Potvinen to have Attorney Lindsey prepare the paperwork for the purchase of the property in the proposal. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. So hopefully we'll have an answer for you next council if we have the members to vote. Thank you. Any other public input?
I can see him here. Not here.
No, me, he called and came back out. Said he was busy. We'll do Mayor and Councillor and then we'll get Mr. Devich up here. I just have one comment that I'd like to address from what I've seen. Complaints about the city garbage dumpster that we removed from the public's use. I just want the people to be aware, the cost of that cost the city residents $24,000 a year. The fees the public paid, that 50 cent fee only covered 4,680 cents. The justification to keep it when it was buried in the city, $20,000 a year was just, it's astronomical. So we did vote that we are going to bring it back in the spring. I believe it was a month discovered or discussed and we'll bring it back this fall to the fall cleanup for a set, I believe, a month. So citizens will be able to use it, but it, this, it was abused. I saw myself mattresses, TVs, the garbage that wasn't supposed to be there, in there. So if there's anybody with any questions, please come to City Hall and ask about it. That's the reasoning that was voted to get rid of. It was costing the taxpayer too much to justify keeping it. On another note with the kiddie parade, I'm trying to find people to volunteer, step up and help out. I think I have enough for the parade. I do not have enough for the activities afterwards, for the races. I have three people. We need a minimum of eight just to make those happen. I don't know the number of kids. I'm sure there's a few, but if anybody is paying attention and you want to help out, please contact myself or contact City Hall so we can continue the races after the parade. Thank you. That's, I want to make one comment to Councillor Potvinen and his wife for the help he's done in cleaning up some of the city lots. Thank you. That's all I have. Councillor Potvinen.
Yeah, on that note about cleaning up city lots, see, we had some painting done here on the fascia of the fire department and city building here, and it looks great. Now, I believe we should continue that facelift across the street at the Public Works Building. And I'm going to make a motion tonight that we, to start, we can change the windows there that have been, they've been looking tough shape for many years. I think that would help immensely. And then possibly some painting and just some cleanup would improve that building 100%. So I'd like to make the motion to have Sam go ahead and look for quotes to change the windows out. And possibly the cleanup could be done by the Public Works Crew and maybe some painting of the window sills could be done by the Public Works Crew or something. It wouldn't take a lot of work. And that's what I'm proposing on my motion.
Motion by Councillor Potvinen to, and supported by Councillor Polis to direct Sammy to get some quotes on the replacement of the windows and cleaning up the exterior of the Public Works Building. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Polis.
The only thing I want to address is we got a big week next week coming up with the street dances, I believe, this Saturday. Am I correct on that?
Yes, the first.
This Saturday and then the 3rd of July is always a big one. And then the crawl for the cure later on in the end of the month, in July?
Middle.
Middle of July. They're going to, the fire department will have a beer garden and stuff there. And I believe there's some food trucks and stuff there. So come out and support the locals and fire department's looking for donations for the new fire truck. Thank you.
Thank you. I will do the reports from the staff, boards, and commissions. Mr. Devich, if you would step up, we'll bring you forward first for...
I believe you should have the paperwork. I'm here filling in for Chief Kwikowski. And I understand you have everything you need. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, I really have nothing more to add unless you have a question of me.
Mayor, if I can, Chief and I spoke of this as well. And just putting us comparatively to other fire departments around us, we're relatively low. I know there's, you know, talk of what the future holds for all of, you know, our communities together. So we want to be competitive and keep the members that we have as well and not lose them to neighboring cities that are still within their response time just due to the differences in benefits. So that's kind of one of the reasons that we sent in for this cost level inquiry as well.
And so what this is, so I know I didn't announce it. I'm trying to look for what, this is an increase into the para for the fire department?
Correct. So we want to bring them to a benefit year per service, you know, closer, I believe, Chief said, to the 2,000 mark. We're still going to be a little lower than other areas, but if we can gradually step this up by years and not do it all at once cost effectively, we just eventually want to start getting them to where, you know, that benefit is going to be a little closer to what everybody else is giving for their firefighters and their para pensions.
If I remember, we did this last year too. We've been trying to increase it every year. So this is just a normal deal.
It is. And we thought with the fee retirements that would bring us closer to solvency and honestly put us the opposite way. So we just got to put a little more in so that we can keep them a little better.
So is this a resolution I have to read for the increase?
It's in the packet. You do not have to read it unless you still choose.
We just need to vote on it, right?
And the increase is?
I believe it's to the 2,000 level, correct? Okay.
So there's no set or determined amount?
No, it would be an increase from the 1,800 per year service to 2,000.
To 2,000 a year per service. Got you.
I'll move. I'll second.
Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Potvinen to increase the fire department's para from 1,800 to 2,000. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries.
Mayor, if I may, that would also be Resolution 2023-14.
Correct. Yes, and for resolution, I just saw that. Resolution, yep, 2023-14. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Say, Todd?
Yes?
Could you explain the donation? I'm just confused about the Fire Department Relief Association. How does that work where you donate? That's a separate entity than the fire department then? I'm just trying to understand the donation.
The Fire Department Relief Association is a separate entity from the fire department in that our PERA is run by the state and the Relief Association is the organization that handles the pension plan. So it's really one in the same except it's divided into two only for the reason of the pension.
So why is there donation? Is there an excess money or something or how does that work?
I guess, I don't understand what you mean by donation.
That's how it's stated here.
Wait, there's two of them actually, Councillor Potvinen. The Fire Department Para contribution is A. And then the Fire Relief donation, C, is actually they have more money in their funds, so they're donating $1,000 to the fire department. I believe that donation, is it pull tabs that they get that off of? If I'm not mistaken?
Oh, the donation part would be, the pull tabs are run by the Relief Association. So the pull tab money goes into a fund that the pull tabs run. The Relief Association manages it. We take requests on a monthly basis. And all the money that we have that is raised via pull tabs gets donated back into the community. And it's mostly for like scholarships, youth activities, any requests that we get for different events, you know. And I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but is the $1,000 donation going from the Relief Association to the fire department?
From the Gilbert Fire Department Relief Association to the Gilbert Fire Department of $1,000.
Yeah, and I'm not 100% certain on it, but I believe that money is being used to run our 4th of July concessions.
Yeah.
Okay. One more question on that.
Sure.
So where are these pull tabs located? And wasn't there something with the Elks? Was the licenser of this pull tabs in Gilbert?
No.
In my past memory?
No. The Gilbert Fire Department Relief Association operates their own pull tabs. The only site we have is at the Sandbar right now. We've had others in town, but the Sandbar is the only site that they manage.
Yeah.
And they manage their own pull tabs.
How about the bar across the street? I remember a few years ago, they, they had pull tabs. And the Elks was?
Yes.
Yeah, all the bars in town that have charitable gaming have them through different organizations. The Sandbar has the fire department, but the fire department has no others in town currently.
Okay, okay. So when they applied across the street for that, wasn't the Relief Association interested in taking that, those pull tabs also?
I don't think it was offered.
Oh, okay.
Every, every bar owner has the opportunity or the option to go with the charity of their choice. And I honestly couldn't tell you if the fire department was offered or not.
Okay. But that money now that Eglith has it, does it stay in Eglith? You know, even though the pull tabs are sold in Gilbert? Does that money that's to go to charities or whatever, does that go to Eglith now because the Elks takes it over?
I think it would go to the Elks. And I don't know how their requests are handled. But like for the Gilbert Fire Department, we receive requests every month and we discuss them and vote on them as membership. And then we make the donations out of the money that we have back into the community. I would assume the Elks Club does that the same way. And I don't know who's making requests of the Elks.
Well, that's why I was just curious why the money, because they're sold in Gilbert, it's a Gilbert by wire, the money wouldn't come back to Gilbert. That was my question at the time when I heard about this several years ago when this happened. And it's still my question, why it's not coming back to us, I guess.
I guess that's.
So just kind of listening to the conversation, there's a couple of different things that the city can do to kind of control the charitable gambling. One of those things would be to update the gambling ordinance to provide for charitable gambling funds within the city. Whether the city would be entitled to a certain portion of the gambling profits within town. The other thing that you can do, that the council can do would be to revise the ordinance to provide some geographical protection. I know a lot of our sister cities do this. Basically, we put an ordinance in place that would require that a percentage up to 100% of the gambling proceeds that come out of or originate the city of Gilbert be spent back within the city of Gilbert. It can't be that narrow, but it could be the city of Gilbert and the adjoining cities to create a basically a gambling trade area.
That makes sense.
I think we should look into that because I don't, you know, because.
Yeah, I'm not aware of an ordinance that we have, so.
I don't think there is anything.
So that's worth looking into for sure.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
If the council would like, I could prepare a memo with some summaries of the options that are available and even some proposed language that would update our ordinance to provide for these options.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Do we need to have a motion for you to do that?
Did you hear that? I guess not.
Shouldn't have to.
Tell them, Jill, do we need a motion for that memo?
Brian, can you hear? Yeah, there, no, no motion is required. I'll just put it on my to-do list to get that over for consideration at one of the next meetings.
Excellent. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd. I kind of jumped ahead a little bit.
Yeah, thanks for the info.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think we're good.
Fire department, thanks.
Yeah, tell them thanks and have a good 4th of July. It's going to be busy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. City Attorney Lindsey, do you have any?
Yes. Any reports?
Any report?
No.
No reports.
Thank you. Chief Teacher is out. He's been busy on an incident over in Boabik for the last two days. So I wish him and the department the best on what they're dealing with. City Engineer.
One item, we're in the process of getting quotes for the approved plumbing project up on, by the holiday. That will be a sewer extension from Summer Street area up the hill that would provide sewer for the site and an access off of 135 as a driveway. So we're planning on getting quotes by about July 7th and bring them back for your July 11th council meeting for review. And I know Jill's going to use those for the IRRB application. She talked to this IRRB about the funding process for this. So having the quotes in hand will help the application too. So that's the schedule right now.
Correct. Chris is going to work with us to apply for July 1st, which is their next fiscal year in getting that application for that development infrastructure grant in place and moving forward.
Excellent.
So that was just an update. That's all I had.
That's an update. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sammy's gone. We'll go to Campground Host Wendy.
Good evening, everybody. Everything's been going pretty good at the campground. I was doing a lot of watering, trying to keep the grass from drying up, which has been a challenge. But hopefully this rain will give us some relief. And I tried seeding some of the new sites and getting them watered so that the grass will grow in the new sites because they're all dirt. I, see, they were out this, today and yesterday, finishing up the work there for the new sites and filling in some holes and stuff. So they're going to be black topping them. What's, where's gravel now? They're going to be black topping those spots where they did the work. So that will be happening tomorrow. We're full for the 4th. I got a waitlist of about 10 people wanting sites that we don't have. I also have, of course, the crawl for the cure, we're full. And I got so far only 10 of the 50 sites reserved, but they put on a new call for people to sign up. So I'm hoping to get a bunch more in within the next two weeks. So I am creating a map with all the names of the people that are, are reserving these sites so that when, when they do show up, someone can direct them and don't know exactly where they are to go. Um, I've been talking with the, um, coordinators of the Call for the Cure, and I've been trying to do some switching of, of things around in there to accommodate them. And I think we're going to have a real successful Call for the Cure. I have a flyer that I passed out to you all about a festival for 2024. A lady approached me this week and wanting to book the entire campground, except for, of course, the seasonals. And booking it Thursday, leaving Sunday. And they're not sure of the weekend. But they would also like to take advantage of the off-site camping that we have for Call for the Cure. So that, I know the, the way it's set up, we can have two events, so this would be a great second event. They would have Paul in a flatbed trailer and have their bands set up on that. And they would play from about noon till about 2:00 in the morning. Um, my seasonals are all up on the north, north end. So if we put a band down at, down in the bottom by the, um, the lower level, I don't think it would bother them then. They, um, there's some spots to Google, the different festivals that they are involved in. And they want to make Gilbert one of those festivals to have it every year. So, um, I don't know if it's something that the city would want or, or not, but I think it's a good idea. They would want a beer tent there, and I don't know how that would be run. You know, if it would be a local bar or, I don't know, the Fire Department? Can have a, um, a beer tent there and see if we can't make it a successful event. But I just brought it, brought it up so that you guys could investigate it a little bit. I, you know, I'm not looking for an answer. I just want you to be able to Google it and look at what they're doing at these other spots where they're having the events already.
Where is that?
Well, it looks like it's Wisconsin.
In Wisconsin?
Yeah. But they, they, they found our little niche up here and they liked it. So they thought this would be an ideal place. It wouldn't be as full of a festival as, as some of these other ones because, you know, we're just not that big. But we could certainly, we could certainly pack the campground in the adjoining area, I think.
So is this some group? Is this a group or do they, you know?
Yeah, they, they, they have, it's, it's a group of, of people that, um, prepare the committee or have committees that they get together and, and set up the bands. They sell, they're not sure how they'd work it as far as the campground, whether they would pay the full price for the campsite upfront, one, one solid amount, and then charge the people. Because what they do is they get wristbands, and that pays for the band also. So then they would pay for their camping and their wrist, and the band with a wristband. And then they would pay the full amount to the campground upfront. Or they could do it individually, you know, that she wasn't sure how we would want to run that.
Is that for Friday, Saturday?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
There's bands every night?
Yep, starting at noon, starting at noon until 2:00 in the morning. Eight bands a day they usually have.
We'll have to research it.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be researched, I think, because the 2:00 AM alone is gonna, I think, be a concern.
Yep.
And, and the noise bands make, I, I think it's a good idea, but that, I think we need Chief Teacher's input on that for, and what we got for noise ordinances and.
This is also.
Yeah.
Right.
This is 2024. We got plenty of time.
Exactly.
Oh, it's 24.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But we need to know by, by January.
Yeah, I suppose, so they have other venues that they go to throughout the year?
Right, right. They do have other venues they go to. This would be just an additional one.
Right.
So, but, um, yeah, for me to be able to book the whole area, I would have to do it by the 15th of January before my reservation is open.
Right.
And besides, they need, I'm sure, a good set amount of time to coordinate it all.
Sure.
I'll have to look into it and.
Yeah, I think so. And so do you know these people personally, or they just reached out to you?
No, no. No, she, she was in the campground driving around and she called me up. And actually, I was in the, down by the D-loop and I saw her going the wrong way. So I pulled her over and stopped her. And, oh yeah, they always go the wrong way. But, um, and so we were talking person to person then. And she gave me this information and I figured I'd bring it to council.
Okay, excellent.
Sounds like a Wii Fest almost.
Yeah, 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 mini Wii Fest.
Yeah.
Well, a question I had about the black topping, what black topping is taking place?
When they, when they put in the new sites
Yeah.
down below, they had to take the black top up to run the, the, um, water and sewer and all those lines underneath. So from about halfway up the D-loop and a section of the main road, the drive, there's no black top now.
So that was part of the contract with the new sites then?
Yes.
That was through, through Joel and Sop's contract to patch, patch it back.
And so they're gonna be black topping, getting it black topped tomorrow.
Is that gonna be a problem for, you know, keeping people off the new mat?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I don't have anything else.
I have a question on the, the splash, not splash, is there splash pad?
Oh.
Splash town, yeah.
Is that all kind of set up now?
It's, it's in the works. I met with Carly this weekend. I actually took her out in my boat and we got some depths of where we recommended she put it. And it is off the point between the fishing dock and the boat landing. We discussed other areas, but the size of this thing is 113 feet square. So it's huge. And it's gonna be between 40 feet deep and into about 120 foot deep.
When do they think they're gonna have it out there?
Her goal is to have it out there and ready by the third. So she said they had, uh, commercial divers coming up to place the 1,800 pound weights to hold it in place. And I think there was like eight, 16 or 18 of them. And then, uh, they, they want to move forward.
They're coming to sign the property lease, um, an extended state lease for the hundred dollars tomorrow, I believe. I have it ready to go, so I just have to contact her back, let her know I'm ready on my end. And they have the facility for where they're ticketing and maybe some small concessions. They have that ready to go as well, so it's all coming to fruition.
It's moving forward then?
It is.
There's lots of interest.
Except for one thing, it's already in the, on, on the web, web, it's already says it's, it's active now. It says today.
I haven't seen that. I just saw the coming soon.
I had, I had staffers asking me, where is it? It says today.
Just talk it's invisible for now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, they're, they're, they're in the process of painting it.
So on, on that concession stand or whatever they're having ticket stand, where is, is that portable? Is it on wheels?
It is on wheels from my understanding.
They, yes, they discussed two. They said a trailer on a trailer, and then they had asked me, and I told them they had to bring it to council if it was a, a shelter or a shed.
Yeah.
But my understanding, it's gonna be on a wheel.
Okay.
And when, what we suggested they do is along the upper part of the boat landing, along that edge, is place it there, because then people will be able to access it. And then they'll have a little bit to go into where the steps down or where they're gonna go down to the, the pad
Yeah.
to walk out. So that gives them a little bit of space.
Okay.
Because I can only imagine there's gonna be lines and people are gonna cluster there. And so along that edge right there, I think is probably the best for them.
And they're supplying their own electricity by generator?
From, that's from our last discussion, yes. However, there is electric there and that's something if they ask, council should have to. Because I know from our previous.
Is it un-metered, uh, that outlet or whatever's there?
I think so.
Yeah, so that'll have to be discussed.
Yeah, on a light pole there, absolutely. If it, that will have them, if they contact me, bring it to council for approval. But it sounds like it's a go. They're trying to shoot for the third. And it, it seems like they have their ducks in a row.
Okay.
So a lot of people are excited about it.
Yeah, yeah, I just hope.
It's trial.
With getting those weights in there that they don't have any issues. Because I dove it, the terrain is rocky and ledgy and, and you're in 120 feet of water.
Professional divers, they hopefully they know what they're doing.
Yes, so.
Good. Sounds good then.
But it, it, it sounds like it's a go, hopefully. Do you have anything else, Wendy?
Not at this time, no.
All right, we'll go on to Library Director Sue.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, just a couple of things. The library will be closed the third and the fourth. Mostly because everyone perches their chairs all around the doors and there is no way to get in. But that's so good because it's lovely to see the response to all the parade and everything that goes on in Gilbert. Um, Friday, we have the Northern Lights concert. It's at 10:30 in the morning so that it will be cool in the community center. Um, I will send informations to the campground tomorrow. It's, we have this annually with the Northern Lights. And it's young proteges that come and play their violins and piano and cello and all. They're delightful, they're energetic, they're fun to be around. And it's a whole family at the concert. And on there, we have a handmade puppet box of pond things. Seal boxes, this is for children to come and grab. It's not just one for family. Uh, it's come and I will give it to you until I drown. And then later on, towards the end of the month, we will have the creator of the pond stuff for puppets coming in. And he's gonna try to go outside to our picnic tables so that anyone can come stop by, enjoy, kind of what's going on. And even those of us who work in here are gonna try to be a little creative and show you what we can do with pond projects. And that is it for you. Any questions?
I do not have any. Thank you, Sue.
Well, I hope you all have a great board.
You as, you as well. Any advisory boards? Paul on Zoom? I tend to skip them. No advisory boards. Clerk Zoller.
Um, thank you. I got a couple of updates here. Where do I start? So a question for John, if he could for us look into, I've had a request of handicap parking along our main street. Is there availability? Is it feasible? What do we have to do if we could maybe look into getting one in front of the library and maybe one in front of the VFW? Um, there's, I think, one right now in front of the post office, and that is the only handicap parking space designated, I believe, on Main Street.
There is one in front of the library.
There is, okay.
One library and one in the post office.
So maybe look at one in front of the VFW?
Do they just have to be repainted? Is that a problem? Are they visible?
I think the one it's, the VFW, there is none at the VFW. And I know, I've been noticing Linda parking on the sidewalk in front of it with her handicap, so it'd be nice if either on the side. It'd be better on Main Street because of the hill for her handicap.
So maybe that's something we could look into, painting it so it's more visible.
And I know summer help used.
Because it's more visible.
That used to be a task summer help would have done before the Fourth of July. But again, Sammy is short again.
He is. My other question for parking is, Bob and I had discussed where the old bootshoff building used to be. If we could maybe level that a little bit, us from City Hall could park down there and just walk up, which would free up some space around City Hall and that area as well. Just an option to throw out there, but that was something we thought we'd be, you know, if we could make it where it's parkable, we would park down there, which would free up some space. From there, I would like the council to authorize me to go ahead and make application to submit applications for us to submit for funding for water line reimbursements. I know JPJ is one of the authorized engineering firms, so I'll work with John. But we'd like to go ahead and get that application, and I believe is it July 9th or 10th? July 20th, so we'll have to have that in. So if I could just get a motion to let me go ahead and start that application process. Um, it's real early in the stages, but we've got some deadlines to meet.
And that's for the water line application?
Correct, which kind of goes with this farther down on the application line, but we can tackle that at the same time. This will be going into the billing inserts this month. And for this process and the information gathering and all of our processes, there is funding available to help us offset those costs, so they kind of go hand in hand.
This has to do with the lead service line?
The copper.
Correct.
Costs to do the planning, the investigation, the research is what the application is that the Department of Health will, you know, the city has to apply for funding for that, so. Then there's a third phase that gets into the actual replacement if there's issues found or identified, so. It's a process.
Yeah, and that was that presentation we had from that gentleman in your office?
Correct.
Talking about, okay.
So is this what the residents are gonna get?
That is correct, and it will actually be in color, so there's a few spots in here. But those of them that are willing to just go downstairs and take the picture or wherever their line happens to come in, we're asking them to go ahead and do that. We have a dedicated email, or they can snap a picture, return it to us. Those that don't want to, if they could contact us, we'll then send one of our public works individuals to take that for them. Um, we're just giving them the option. Not everybody likes people in their homes, so. And if you feel you're technically savvy enough to go ahead and snap this and get the right angles.
So if a person doesn't want you in their home, can they just say, we don't want anything to do with this?
We have to get the inventory information. So, um, either they'll need to do that for them, or we're gonna need to request access to their home to do it for them. It is information we have.
Question, because now you're needing to access their home, and all that goes.
I do.
Problem.
Yeah.
Can you hear that? Because I don't.
Brian is still on here.
Brian, did you hear that question?
He may have stepped away.
Yeah, the gentleman that came and that I walked in on, uh, explained that he had had that issue. And he's been doing this, so he came up with a way to try to get them to take the picture for us. And to express that, it, it needs to be done because of the concern with the lead and copper, or the lead, but he explained not to use.
He explained that those of them that are willing to help us and obtain this information, there's funding available for it to be fixed if you do find that you have the issues in your home. If you refuse, and when the federal government eventually makes this mandate for everybody, you will pay for it yourself.
Yes.
So there is the purpose and the perk to getting this information for us is that their funding for it will be free to you if you deny and refuse. Eventually, it's going to have to be done, and you're gonna pay for it yourself. So there is the perk to it.
So. So are they trying to identify galvanized pipe? Is that what they're trying to identify?
It's all of the...
Galvanized pipe?
It's all of the piping.
From the city?
That's one of the issues regarding the lead service. I made it connected to a galvanized pipe, which is a suspect area. When they put a bush neck on water line, bottom would make out of that. So that's kind of, not a galvanized service, it's a suspect. Could be a left fitting or something somewhere along the line. That's why you're on the inventory. You can kind of see if you've got copper line, it's probably not an issue of, you know, lead service. But if galvanized is suspect, not necessarily a suspect.
So would this be the older homes that would be more suspect? Because, you know...
I would assume.
Yeah, galvanized hasn't been used for, you know, what, 50 years now or whatever?
Yeah. The galvanizer is so rigid. You know, when copper, when they tied the water service to copper, a new water service and touch flexibility in the copper pipe, it's tied in as a bush neck. Galvanizing is rigid. What they did in the past is they made that bush neck connection out of that. Bottom of the...
Before copper was widely used?
Not 100% that it is lead, but it's suspect. That's why it is that.
But this was done like 50 years ago at least, right? Because anything built probably after a certain year wouldn't even have that.
There's some base like that that the Department of Health recognizes that it's past. It's big.
In addition to this, this information is going to be kept forever. We will update these reports every time there is construction done, et cetera, et cetera, where eventually they're suspect that this information and the way you collected it and the amount you've collected will determine how many grants you will get. So that is kind of the verbiage they're giving in the tell that the more successful you are at getting this, the more money that you're going to be able to request and possibly get, or they're going to probably dock you in the future if you don't.
Another question is, so they're going to go onto private property and if there is a need to make it copper or whatever to get rid of the lead, there's going to be monies available to actually dig, you know, from the city service line to the property in their basement?
That's what we're under, that's what we're being told. Yes, that is what we're being told.
That's what they talked about. You know, this is really that three-phase approach. One is the inventory of water services. The Department of Health wants a complete database of all services the city has. And then the records they have, like all water line plans, construction plans. You know, we've just got a bunch of replacements of meters. What did we learn from meter replacements to identify them and install the new meters? And then the second phase is the visual inspections of somebody's suspect areas. I don't know exactly how that's going to work on stuff that's buried, but they may have to do some excavations of, you know, corporations and try to... The curb stop is connected to the water, the city water line on the street side of the courses and private stuff. And the third part is corrective action. So if we got to that issue, and that's in the third phase of the program, it's supposed to be all part of the funding package.
Very expensive if you got to go, you know, do a lot of homes from, dig from the curb stop into the home itself.
I think Phase One, getting the inventory, they want everybody to do this by September of '24. That's the time to do this, this year. It's not, you know, this year, it's next year that they want.
So...
Get this application and see what spoke of words for them to be, you know, provided to the city. We're not even asking for money yet because we're not sure what might be done.
So is the, the city water lines, are any of them, do they have lead in that you know of? From your experience with the city, it's been 30 years. Of course, everything has been, you know, unleaded.
I don't think they have all fittings that...
So this would just be the private owners that would be basically getting the improvement? Not the city itself on their mains? None of the mains would be affected?
I'm not aware of fittings that they would, the city would have done. I'm not sure what they would have done years ago.
Yeah. And that's the thing, how would we know records of that, you know?
Yeah, some of your, some of your ASBILs and stuff, what, there was a date like after something, I want to say 1990-ish, somewhere in there, there, you know, your ASBILs now provide that information. Had we known of this prior to us doing our water meters, when Corin Maine is who we bought them through, but they sublet the actual installations to Vanguard. My understanding is some establishments automatically do a tick sheet, they call it, and they would have already documented all that. But it sounds like Vanguard did not. So we kind of missed on that. But had we known this, we would have had everything at our fingertips already.
Yeah. It's all the questions I have on that.
So back to a motion, or if we could, to go ahead and let me, you know, start that application process and then to go ahead and insert that into each of the bills.
And that's through the Department of Health?
It is, correct.
Minnesota Department of Health.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Potenon to allow Clerk Zoller to start the application process for the, is it the replacement or the looking into the water line meters in residences?
Reimbursement program.
And reimbursement program from the Minnesota Department of Health. Any further discussion?
I got one that brings up a question I was thinking about the other day is the ones I don't have meters hooked up with, because I, well, if I remember right, they were supposed to be paid for and then they weren't paid for. Is that correct?
The water meters?
Meters.
Well, the water meters have been paid through the general ledger account. We haven't collected the debt service, correct?
Paid for it, correct?
Correct.
Or ordinance, correct?
Right. Now, there was a deadline that had to be met, otherwise, I think there was a hundred dollar fee added to their bill. Does that deadline have to be moved now?
That is for the INI, I think is what you're referring to, for the non-inspections. They are going to be, everybody that is not allowed us to inspect is going to start being billed for that hundred dollars. I think we're shooting for August 1st because we want to get a letter out to everybody.
Yeah, and I think that's separate than this. Is that your sewer, sewer, some pump issue?
Correct. We were supposed to start billing for that, the Council Polis, back in October. And had we, we would have collected about $115,000 already.
I thought this was the water meters was kind of tied into this though. Weren't, wasn't there something on those too?
No, this is separate. This is our lead and copper.
Yeah, this is the...
Regulation the state is bringing down.
Right. But it hooks up to your water meter.
Correct.
So that's what I was getting at is, is the people that haven't done it yet, if they have to switch all this around.
Do that at the same time.
Do they install the water meters now?
No, I think there was only like 20 or 30, Sam said, that weren't hooked up. Or did he get them all? Because it was up to the city to do the last ones because the installer left. And I believe there was 20 or 30 and I don't know if he completed them or...
And I want to say we're waiting on meters. I believe they installed all that we had, but we're waiting on meters, I think. But I could double check with Sam on that.
I thought it was 20 or 30. There was...
Yeah, there wasn't a lot.
But didn't we put something in place? I mean, I didn't agree with it. But didn't we put something in place for the meters had to be installed by a certain date too? Otherwise, there's going to be a fee tacked on?
I don't recall that.
I don't think the meters. I think it was the inspection.
That's the only thing I'm aware of.
It was the INI inspection.
Yeah.
I know that was, but we just need to look and see and make sure.
Yeah.
I can do some digging back into the old, when the water meter process started and see what I find.
And yeah.
No, Sam is sure it's, you know.
Yeah.
I was just getting, someone asked me about that the other day, so I was just kind of bringing it up.
But yeah, and that does make sense because meters would hook up to this.
Correct.
The ones that aren't compliant, are we going to get them to comply with? Giving us a picture, we're going to have to...
It's going to be difficult.
Yeah. I know in talking with Attorney Lindsay, there is a process the city has for an administrative subpoena to get into houses. He did say that the courts are reluctant in giving them, however.
If the feds are pushing this.
Yeah.
I think if it's, it's just a picture that they got to take and send in, I don't think they're going to have an issue with it, rather than someone coming in their house. I could see people having an issue with that because that's already been a problem, but...
And a majority of...
They're just taking a picture on themselves and they fill in.
And it's going to benefit them. It's going to help them because it's upgrading their system.
And it's going to help the city in ways of grants for the future, which then lowers our tax base. So.
I think that's one of the biggest things with the INI is getting into somebody's house so that people don't want you in there.
Right. And some have denied access, right?
Correct.
Maybe that's where the subpoena comes in or to have access legally.
Yeah.
For those people anyway, the ones that, you know, refuse the INI inspection.
Yeah.
I did find that from yesterday's conversations, that point of sale, upon sale of house, sanitary sewer inspections. So I did find that we could communicate with a lot of our title companies and let them know we have that process. That would help too, if people are selling or turning over.
A few years ago, I know Jim was supposed to contact all the local realtors and the title companies to make them aware of that point of sale ordinance that we passed.
Yeah, so we can revisit that and get that out to everybody.
Right.
Yep. Perfect. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries, 3-0.
I have my next item. Sam has asked that I bring forward, they would like to stand an offer for employment for the water, wastewater equipment too, to the David Huppler. I hope I said his name correctly. He was our pick for that.
Say that again?
What was his last name?
David Huppler. I think it's H-U-P-P-L-E-R.
Oh, I thought.
Huppler, Huppler. I'm not sure if you heard it pronounced.
That's my understanding. I, I didn't think it was Huppler. I thought it was Whitley. David. He was the first interviewer.
Yep.
Oh, did you check on him?
Yep.
Oh, okay. That's why we went to the second.
And then he had a talk with Tara. His qualifications were more for the wastewater treatment plant. And with the public works side, they figured he's trainable on that. So, but they figured it was more important to have the wastewater licenses that...
Correct.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that. That's why.
I think he did, he did try contacting.
Sam tried calling you, telling you, was going to explain that to you. I think he left you a message on your phone.
I'll move on that.
But that's if...
So he was actually the second choice?
He was the second and he said all of us, the committee, that was the entire committee.
Okay, so, so we vote on it now? Because then he want, they want to hire him after background check as soon as possible.
Correct.
Correct. Moved by Councilor Polis.
Okay, I'll second that.
Supported by Councilor Potenon to go ahead with the hiring process of David Huppler for the wastewater treatment plant. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries, 3 to 0.
My last is just kind of a finance update. So we do have the $239,000 in our six-month CD. So that's been moved over there. After that, we currently have $600,824 and change in general ledger. And the campground has $85,333 and that's after last motion for the $16,000 and I can't remember what it was, for the expenses to the campground as well as the transfer for ties. So.
What was the campground?
$85,333 and 25 cents.
So then the, what you gave in the general is that after these bills were paid?
Correct.
Or before these bills were paid?
The most current checks here have not cleared except for the bottom portion, which our ACH is.
Okay, so, so we're in good shape?
Correct.
Because we did get our taxes.
That's correct. And we get the remaining balance of our, we got 70%. And then remaining comes in July 3rd.
Okay. So we're good for a while?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, that's good to hear.
Then in July, we have LGA.
Well, that comes in July.
End of July, I believe.
July too, so.
Okay. Is it come fully or half?
That I'm not, no, I believe it's in full. I believe last year's was in full.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. For old business, the wastewater treatment plant, we don't have Sammy here, we'll skip. The annual renewal of worker compensation coverage premium. The highlighted amount, 98, 605 is the amount? Moved by Councilor Polis. Supported by Councilor Potenon. Any discussion?
Yeah. I see we, it was reduced by $754. Am I reading that right?
Correct.
And this is workman's comp and it's based on how many employees you have, right?
Correct. It's also...
An accident?
Accident, yeah.
Yeah. So we were reduced by $754 from last year. I guess we have no choice. Have to prove it. It's a large amount of money, but...
It is, but we need the coverage, John. I agree. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries, 3-0.
We don't really have anything. I think we'd probably just best to bring them to our next meeting just because we can't do a closed session tonight, you know, for any of the contract issues. So we'll just advance them.
So we'll skip C. And we'll move on to new business with the fire department pair contribution. And we did that, so that is, yep.
We did the water line, so just the fire relief donation approval.
Yep, fire relief donation and then the, yep.
And we had that explained, so we can just move on that?
Moved by Councilor Polis.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Potenon to accept a fire relief donation in the amount of, I believe it was a thousand dollars.
That comes from the gambling fund.
Coming from the pull tab gambling fund, correct. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries, 3 to 0. And then D would be the...
This is only a city dump.
Relocation agreement for the old city dump that is on Cleveland Cliff's property. They're looking to relocate it. And for the clarification there, clarify that Menorca did not create or add anything to the dump. State Menorca's willingness to cover the expense of moving the waste to a modern landfill, but without transferring the liability for the waste from the city of Menorca. In order to maintain that clarity, Menorca is asking the city to be the signatory on the waste documents associated with the profiling and the transfer of the wastes. Neither add to nor take away from the city's liabilities with respect to the wastes. They are the city's liability in their current situation and they will remain the city's liability. liability after the material is relocated to a modern landfill. We believe the risks associated with the waste are substantially less likely when stored in a modern landfill. The agreement also seeks to protect that the city is not responsible for any gross negligence on Menorca's part in moving the wastes.
Mayor Fumey?
Yes.
I'll also add that Attorney Lindsey has reviewed that with some of his corrections, so our signature document would be with his corrections.
So basically, they want us to take responsibility for anything that goes wrong?
Yeah, with what's in the waste.
And if Attorney Lindsey, if he's still on, which I believe he is, he could maybe give us, you know, a little more background on that. I don't know, I mean, the city dump, it's our city dump, and I think that makes us liable anyway, if I understood his wording, but.
Exactly, that's, yeah.
Yeah, we really don't have a choice.
Right.
Right.
And when we had the meeting with them, that's, yeah, so.
So we need to make the motion to.
Didn't we make that motion in the beginning? I thought we motioned to already do the.
To add it to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
For discussion.
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor Polis.
I'll second.
Supported by Counselor Potenon, for the relocation of the old city landfill that is on the Cleveland Cliffs property, pending the attorney edits on the official paperwork.
I will also add that when Cleveland visited with us, they did state they did boring samples and a majority of it was burnt, so it must have already been burnt prior, it sounds like. They got a lot of ash with that, so.
Mayor Fumey?
Yes.
Yeah, I have reviewed those contracts, I did pass along just a couple of my thoughts, and while those thoughts seem, there's some significant suggestions in there, ultimately, as I've kind of heard the conversation, I believe that the council's correct, the liability for the dump is with the city at this point by statute, and so anything that we can do to improve our situation and have it moved is a good thing. There's just a couple of little things I'd like to see if we can tweak in the contract.
Perfect. So we can make a motion with your corrections?
Correct, yep, that would work just fine.
Perfect.
And I believe you did.
Yep, I had the motion, and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 3 to 0. Anything miscellaneous? Anything we missed? Nope. Have a motion by Counselor Polis to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Potenon, will adjourn at 7:15. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None? Motion carries, 3-0. Meeting adjourned.